Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with an invocation by Chaplain Victoria Lansley, WellCare Hospice.
Please stand in a moment of prayer. Creator, Redeemer, and Sustainer of us all, we come before you in this season of Advent, a season of love, hope, peace, and joy. But in acknowledgement and recognition that not all moments in life are hopeful, peaceful, joyful, or loving, we come before you tonight with open hearts and minds. May your Spirit move and be present here in this place as voices are heard and also as voices are absent. May we continue to open our ears to listen and hear, and to reflect, and to make wise decisions that benefit every member of this community. I ask your blessing upon those who are here this evening and those who are with us at a distance and could not be here in person. Provide a hedge of protection around each member of our first responders as they continue to go out and serve our community, no matter the day, the time, the weather, or the call they respond. Be with our students, teachers, faculty, and staff as they continue to learn and keep them safe each and every day. It's in your son's name, the Christ's Child, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Chaplain Lansley. All right, our first agenda item is Item 1A. It's a public hearing on an annexation continued from November 1st. When agenda items are denoted as a public hearing, we will follow the procedures printed on our agenda and also displayed on the screen that many of you are familiar with. All right, Item 1A.
Madam Mayor, this is the continuation of the annexation from your November 1st meeting. It is my understanding of the applicant's intent to withdraw this application with the submittal of the annexation petition that's under 2B for consideration of setting a public hearing. So they have removed the right-of-way from the petition and the concerned citizen was notified. And then they've resubmitted the plat without the right-of-way, so it's just for the land that was rezoned, and that's in Item 2B.
Do I have a motion to... Would it be a motion to withdraw or a motion to accept the withdrawal request?
So moved.
Whichever you prefer.
Mr. Powell, is there a specific wording you need for this? Is there a specific wording that's needed for this? Motion to... Do we accept the motion to... Accept the request to withdraw or make a motion to withdraw it?
No, in fact, it's reducing the amount.
Then I withdraw my motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Alderman Pennix. Here's my second. Second by Mayor Pro Tem Apple. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is speakers from the floor. This is an opportunity to address the board on an item that is not otherwise on the agenda. Mr. Hooker, did we receive any speakers cards?
I have not.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to the board on an item not included on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 2... To Item 2B, consideration of a resolution setting the public hearing for a voluntary annexation petition by the property owner for property located at 0 Kerner Road at the southeast corner of the intersection of Kerner Road and Dean Road containing 46.903 acres, more or less. Ms. Garner?
This is the annexation plat for just the land that was rezoned with K-793. So we're starting the clock over, so it'll be a resolution to set the hearing for your January meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion for approval by Alderman J.R. Gorham, second.
I'm second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Bill Apple. All those in favor? All those opposed? Alderman Barrow is in opposition. Mr. Hooker, what time do you have?
It is 6:44, although it's at the point of the annexation that that really matters next month.
Okay. All right, Item 2C, consideration of a resolution setting the date of a public hearing for a voluntary annexation petition by the property owner for property located at 1223 Union Cross Road with adjoining right-of-way containing 71.49 acres, more or less.
Madam Mayor, this is an annexation plat for the parkland that's been acquired by the town.
And this would expand Ivy Redmond Park?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Apple?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman J.R. Gorham. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. All right, Item 2D is consideration of a resolution setting the date of a public hearing to consider closing Moravian Lane. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, you have in your pocket the resolution setting that date. If the board approves this resolution, the date for the public hearing, and the public hearing is the time where you would hear those that are in favor of closing the street and those opposed to closing the street, that public hearing would be held on January 10th here in the chambers at 6:30.
I don't have any speaker cards on this agenda item, but is there anyone here who wanted to speak to this item?
Kernersville Moravian Church, 109 East Mountain Street, Suite C, 27284. I represent Kernersville Moravian Church in their petition to close Moravian Lane between South Main Street and South Cherry Street. Petition was filed with the town clerk a month or so ago. We were on the November agenda and needed to continue the matter until tonight. Here to answer any questions, but I would just emphasize tonight, much like you just did with the two zoning matters, you're just setting a public hearing for the public to be heard on the relative merits of closing the street.
Thank you, Mr. Grubbs. All right, any questions, discussion, or do I have a motion?
I got questions.
Okay, Mr. Barrow.
Now, by voting on this thing, the resolution intent to close the road and all of that, does that... Does this include if we agree to do this and we have a public hearing, does that mean that the vote is just to close the road and give it to the Moravian Church? Is that what it'll be? Or is it to be later determined, or do we have to determine here?
There's a state law that regulates it. I'll turn that to Ms. Garner or Mr. Swisher.
It's what you're voting on tonight, Alderman Barrow, is to have that meeting. The mayor is correct. There are certain requirements in the state statute that set out what you have to do, that you're required to do. Now, you can... Something comes up, as long as you meet those requirements, you could add something else to the street closing, as long as petitioner agrees to that. But you would not be saying that you're closing the street tonight. You're not doing that. You're just saying that you'll have the public hearing on it so that you can move forward with the next step for this board to decide whether or not to close it. But the state statute states that once... If the board votes to close the street, then the property goes to the owners along that street. So in this case, it would go to the church and to the owners of the parcel there on the corner of Moravian Lane and South Main Street.
Well, I know I have voiced my concern about what's going to happen in the future, and it could be two years, five years, or 10 years, but downtown Kernersville is going to be one way in and one way out at some point in time. The town's growing, it continues to grow. I know there's a sentiment against that right now, but traffic's a nightmare in Kernersville, and something down that lane's going to happen. And when it does, we're going to have to have a cross street somewhere in the Moravians' property, somewhere through there. And right now, we've got Moravian Lane, which it belongs to the town. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we're talking about giving it back to the Moravians, which is fine with me, with the exception that we're going to have to buy property from them at some point in the future.
It's possible if the cut over goes across.
It's going to happen, and I think we're short-sighted not to recognize that that will probably happen at some point in the future. And having said that, I think that we need to work some kind of agreement with the Moravians that they'll... That they will trade us an equal amount at no cost from the rest of their property should we have to cross it at such time as the Cherry Street and Main Street become one way each way. That's going to happen. It'll happen. I mean, we don't... We might not be around to see it, but it'll happen. And if you look back and you had to pay these people, you know, $100,000 for this right-of-way when we could have negotiated it for nothing right now, I think it's wise for the town to do that.
And I think that's something that would be brought up next week in the discussion with the petitioner at that time.
Would you like the board to take some time and maybe study the situation? We could have the Community Development Department look into the need for... Whether or not this road is still needed for the town?
Sure.
And other options?
Yes. I mean, I think it's short-sighted for us not to know that that's going to happen at some point. And, you know, stewards of the towns of money, I think that we have to be smart about that.
It might be possible that we may have to hire some outside consultants to help do the study. Do you think that's something the board should consider pursuing?
Well, yes, considering the cost. I mean, it's easy to give something away. It's going to be very costly if we go back in there and attach 60-foot through that piece of property at the far end of their property. That would be very costly for the town. And anyhow, that's where I'm at. That's what I'm thinking.
Would you like to make a motion, or...?
Well, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we study that before we move forward in closing that road and giving it to whoever owned it before by law, the road closure.
Is there a second? Go ahead.
How did we come into ownership of that road in the first place? Because it was at one time part of the Moravian Church, or how did that come about?
I don't know the history of it, but I'm going to... I'm guessing it was just built as a road and maybe deed it over to the town at some point. Madam Mayor, I'm happy to answer that, if I may.
Go ahead.
So I've done some fairly extensive title research because Alderman Gorham's question was one of the first I had, was where did this come from? As best I can tell, this property, like much of the property in that area, was owned at one point by the Kerner family, who deeded about 17 acres to a lady named Addie Atkins, who some of the folks in the room may know, have fond memories of. Ms. Atkins lived in the house there at the corner of South Main Street and Moravian Lane and sold off about 13 acres of that 17-acre tract, which went, I guess, west back across Cherry Street towards what's now Lowe's Foods, to the Southern family, which is where you get Southern Street from, I would assume. Both in the deed to Ms. Atkins and her subsequent deed to the Southern family, there was reserved a 20-foot cartway, which is now what we know, I believe, as Moravian Lane, based on my title research. It was shown on a 1927 plat as an alley, which, if you look at the town's ordinances, bears on this point pretty closely as to what alleys are intended to do. There's never been a... That I can find dedication of this as a right-of-way. I think by prescription, it probably just became something that everybody used, and somebody got the idea to pave it, and it went from being the Moravian Road to the Moravian Street to what we now know as Moravian Lane. But I don't know that there's anything in the title history, certainly not that I could find one back to the late 1800s, early 1900s, where anybody's made it any way, anything other than a 20-foot cart path. So that may bear some on your discussion or your study. I don't know, but be glad to answer any other questions.
I think it would, and I think that maybe y'all don't need to ask anybody for that road. I think you just need to put up signs and close it.
I think before my client...
If what you say is correct.
Well, I think before my client starts putting wrought iron fence up and digging graves, they probably would want something saying, "Nobody can drive through there."
I understand that, but I mean, you know, what we're dealing with here is titles and ownership, and if it is in fact a 20-foot cartway, I don't know that you can't close it because a cartway has to have somebody that needs it to use. And that might be a hard thing to prove for, you know?
Yeah, and that's actually part of the standard in the statute is whether there's a property owner being deprived of access to their property, which in this case, both of the property owners that have joined the street are petitioners. There is a copy of a survey that Steve Bowers did, I believe with our petition, that shows it's a nominal 18-foot right-of-way there. The road varies in width, but at no place is it wider than 18 feet.
Right. Yeah, again, I think you might not have to do anything.
Yeah, and I also think it's... It might be worth noting that we've had folks come in before to ask the town to take over a street, make it a public street. We would not take this over today as a town street because this, quite frankly, it's not suitable to be a town street. So I think if you do want to move forward with a study, I don't think you need to do a study on whether or not it needs to remain a street as a connector, because the answer to that's going to be no. I mean, it's not wide enough really for two cars to pass. We wouldn't... Much like we didn't take the street last month or months before in Stafford Place or whatever the subdivision was, the neighbors came up because it wasn't wide enough. So we wouldn't accept this street either. So if you do a study, I wouldn't focus on whether or not this is a suitable street to continue to be a connector street. I would say you might want to do a study on where the street may go in the future
Right.
as opposed to this street, because whether or not this... We wouldn't even take it over as a town street now. So it may very well, from what I'm hearing, it may not be one anyway.
From what I've heard tonight from Mr. Grubbs, I'm thinking that maybe it's not ours to give, you know? And I think the first thing we have to do is figure out what it is, because it has value. I think we need to trade it for some contribution by them in the future when we have to cut through their property, which will happen in the next 100 years maybe, or maybe not, versus just putting a sign up and closing it. But I think we got to know what it is first. And if it's a cartway, I can't remember that from law school. My objection might not either because we don't deal with a lot of cartways, but I know it doesn't take much to close one if it's not serving a piece of property. So it may be a little easier than we think it is. And I'm not trying to make a mess out of all this. I'm just trying to think down the road, okay?
Well, I cut through that cartway at least once a day, trying to get from South Main to Cherry Street, so I won't have to fight that South Main Street three-way
Right.
street.
Yeah, I did that.
And try to get over to turn on Old Winston Road.
Right.
Which is a hazardous thing to do. So I just cut through there two hours ago.
Right.
And I'm the only person that cuts through there. So I wouldn't prevent closing it because of me, but I'm just saying some people do, you can say that.
Well, it's in the state of repair right now because it got about three potholes in there as we sit here today. I drove through there today, and there's about three big potholes in that road that need to be repaired. So if we're going to maintain it, then we need to do something about it. It's going to be used by folks here and...
Well, I dodged all of them.
If I may, to Mr. Barrow's point about being good stewards of the public purse, I certainly recognize that and appreciate that as a citizen. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention before you spend a lot of money on consultants and studies, that area, I believe extending almost that far, was studied as part of the 2018, 2019 Street and Thoroughfare Plan, at least to beyond where the split is right now. I'd encourage you to also look at some connectivity there to address Alderman Pennix's concern. There's a lot of right-of-way still in that split and some that could be acquired a lot less expensively than swath across a institution. Just a thought.
I understand that. Y'all could unlock that fence every now and then too, my help, that gate y'all have.
That gate's there.
Keep people from driving through your parking lot.
People use Moravian Lane and not our parking lot.
Madam Mayor, I want to... I appreciate what you've said, John, and I'm wondering if maybe spending money on a study on that might not be premature until we have a little bit better handle around who owns it or not.
Well, we could send this to Community Development to look into
Yeah.
and not vote on it tonight.
I think we should do that, and I think that in the meantime, if we could maybe ask Curtis and Ed to take a look at the nature of control and ownership of that lane, I trust, you know, Mr. Grubbs' review of it and his summary of it, it's not a matter of that, but maybe we ought to know. I think John's question is well-placed, that if we don't need to do anything for them to be able to do what they want to do with it, we don't need to vote.
Right, I agree. Just... I think we just need a title search.
I do too. I'm not sure we really need a consultant to do that for us.
I wasn't saying we needed a consultant. I said if we get into a study that's outside of what Community Development Department could do, but there's a lot of considerations. I think that when you typically are looking at... I looked up the Coats Canon blog about the... Closing a public road, closing a public right-of-way. And I thought about the different situations that this board has faced in the past, not necessarily the current board, but the Board of Aldermen has faced in the past. And I think one of the first considerations is what is the public interest relating to the road? It's a really easy decision if the road was never built, or if the road was built to connect to a road that was never built. There have been times when people have asked us to close a road and the town has not, and then they've planted trees and that and the middle of it, but the town ultimately opened that road and didn't give it back to the property owners on either side. So I think that there's not really anything that I saw in the past experiences where it's a trade. It's just a law, and if you close it, the property goes back to the owners on either side. So this is a complicated enough situation, and it's a call and a judgment I think the board needs to make about the public interest of having this as a road or not before we get into setting a public hearing about it. I think at this point, a lot of the public hearing time would be taken up with us wrestling with those issues. So it seems like maybe having a little bit of time where Community Development could focus on this or advise us of a strategy or a plan of how to get the information we need to have all the facts. If this road has been in place as some form of egress for over 100 years, it seems worth taking a month or two to figure out what the best interest of the community is moving forward, including that first question about what exactly is this? Is this a road on the town of Kernersville system? And although it may... There may have never been a platted formal dedication, just by passage of time, is it a town road, just like some of the other roads in town may be?
I'm with you on that.
And to Mr. Gorham's point, if it is our road and we do intend to use it as a road, we probably need to fix it. So where does it stand on the repairs as far as priorities? Or maybe it's not needed, but it's just a lot of questions.
Anecdotally, just from talking with citizens, it's been... I mean, I've lived here since 1976, and I don't ever remember it not being paved. I think probably sometime in the 50s or 60s, there's some pictures in the bicentennial book from the turn of the last century where it appears to just be kind of a, not even like much more than a cow path, but it is visible from an aerial view. I don't know when it was paved. There's not anything in the public record as it being paved. We... Town's maintained. It's a town... I believe it's a town maintained, right? It's marked in the Thoroughfare Plan as marginal access, I believe, is what it's designated, whatever Brown is. We... We... I just spoke to Mr. Powell. We can do a title search, have a title search done on it. I guess the steps would be do a title search on it. If it is actually a town road, then we can kind of move forward with the next steps from there. If it's not, then this is a mute point anyway. It belongs in church and they can do what they want. So we'll get a title search done on it, and then if it's... We'll go from there. If it's a... If it is a town street, we'll look at some possible options or something and come back. But I, you know, we'll go from there. It'll take us a little while to get the title searched done on it. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't look at having it back on the agenda before February, probably.
Okay, I'd withdraw my motion then.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion, therefore, in place of Mr. Barrow's motion, that we undertake a review of the legal status of that and ask the manager and town attorney to come back and advise us, if possible, at the January meeting, sort of what the status...
I think February is what he said, as soon as he could do it.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. So I'd make that motion.
Okay.
Could you repeat that motion?
Probably not.
He made a motion that the town manager and town attorney look into the legal status of the road and report back to us at the February meeting. Does that sound...
Or as soon as possible.
If we get it done, then we won't have it by January.
The courthouse is...
We're three weeks out, so...
The courthouse kind of gets quiet the week between Christmas and New Year's, so I'm not sure there'd be much help in the records rooms.
I would second that motion.
Got a motion, a second? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
So just to clarify, is it going to be back on for the vote on whether to have the public hearing in February, or are you just going to receive a report about legal status of it in February? I'm just trying to make sure I'm...
We haven't decided. We haven't decided, though.
I'll let you know. I'll give you a call and let you know.
I just didn't want to not be here for something. I'll be here either way, but thank you.
Thank you for the great job you did, Mr. Grubbs, preparing this and presenting it to us tonight and answering the questions. There's a lot of off-the-cuff questions, and we really appreciate your help.
Madam Mayor, related to that motion, is it specifically to bring it back to the board in February, or is it to bring it back to the board as soon as possible?
The town manager suggested February or as soon as possible. So how I heard that was that if it wasn't possible to bring it in February, he'd bring it in March, but that he expected to bring it in February.
Might be the end of January, but it'll probably be February at earliest.
Mr. Grubbs, if you could be sure to be in touch with the clerk's office as to what agenda this appears on. Thank you. I think our end of January... I think our end of January meeting might actually be February 1st. So it would either be what... Where's the calendar for coming here?
February 1st or February 7th.
Right, so or January, what, like 11th?
January 4th and 10th.
Yeah, so January 4th or 10th. I don't... You don't anticipate it being available by January 4th or 10th, Curtis, do you?
No.
All right, so then after that, we'd be looking at February.
For the motion, I'll just use the wording "as soon as possible," and then that way, if it's January, February, March, if that's good, if that's good with the board, that makes more sense. that makes more sense. Because if I say in either February or as soon as possible, then that's kind of committing to February.
That sounds good. Did you make a correction to the motion, or is that good?
So we can allow the 2D just to, we don't have to vote against the resolution. We can let that just sit there. The board took no action.
Right.
Okay. All right, so then moving on to item 2E is the budget amendment number five. Mr. Swisher?
You have the budget amendment in your packet. Most of the expenditures are related to the grants that, that we have received, that being number 2, 4, 5, and, yeah, 2, 4, and 5 are related to the grants. Item 1, increase in the administration department, that is the related to the raise that, that the board gave me along with the related expenditures for that, FICA, retirement contributions, et cetera. Item 3 in the police department, we've had two vehicles totaled out, so we're replacing those. We've also got insurance checks for that. It's also a portion of that, and the lighting on the communication tower, that is the tower down at, behind Public Services that you can see there from Salisbury Street or from anywhere really, Public Services area. The lighting at the top of that went out, we had to replace it. We're required by law to have that lighting on and running, and so when it went out, we had to replace it. And then item 6 are the expenses that we anticipate coming in with Paul J. Senior Botanical Garden, once we assume the operation of that. You also have the revenues, as I mentioned earlier, to offset some of that. You have the revenues from the garden, and you have the grant revenues there as well. So most of that has offsetting, most of the expenses have offsetting revenues, and you have in the stormwater fund $150,000 to cover the emergency repairs over on Drummond Street that the board approved, I think a month ago. I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have related to any of those.
All right, other questions? Is there a motion?
I'd move, Madam Mayor, that we accept those budget amendments.
I move approval by Mayor Pro Tem Apple.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorm. All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. All right, now we are to the election of the Mayor Pro Tem as required by the town charter. And there are four people here, and if you're nominated, you are allowed to vote for yourself.
I'd nominate Bill Apple to serve for the next year.
I have a nomination by, motion by Alderman John Barrow. I have a second by Alderman Joe Pennix, and I would say that Mayor Pro Tem Apple has done a great job as the Mayor Pro Tem, and we've worked very closely on many matters, and I appreciate his service on this board.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to once again thank my colleague, Mr. Barrow, for making that nomination. It's, it's an honor. It was an honor simply to be elected, to serve with these lady, this lady and these gentlemen alone, but to have this lady and these gentlemen ask me to serve as Mayor Pro Tem is pretty good too, pretty nice too. So thank y'all very much. I, I will continue to do my best job I can for you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous, and Bill has said he would serve if, if elected, so we have covered all the bases. Is there anything further on this before we move on to the next item?
Thank you, John.
All right, the Mayor Pro Tem is by our, our rules and our charter elected each, each year, so that's why we're, we're, we did this at the organizational meeting, and that's why we're taking this vote again tonight. All right, IMG is consideration of a contract with Ed Powell for services as a town attorney. Mr. Swisher?
You have in your packet the proposed employment agreement with Mr. Powell. His current contract runs out at the end of this year. The proposed contract that you have will be effective January 1 through December 30th of, or 31st of 2023. Same terms as, as the co- contract that he's currently under. He'll be here at Town Hall three days a week, attend all board meetings, be available to the Alderman, Department Heads, Town Employees, those three days as well as by phone, the two days a week, really, in this case, he's available every day of the week by phone and here three days a week. Same contract as he had before. Some salary sum for that's $125,000 a year, and he, he will bill this monthly. He'll be an independent contractor. As he has been, he'll bill this monthly as he's done this past year.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we extend Attorney Powell's contract for the next year.
And I would like to second that motion.
I have a motion by Alderman Pennix, second by Alderman Gorm. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous, and I'd like to say I have enjoyed working with you, and I appreciate how accessible you have been when I have emailed you or called you, even if it's on the weekends or a holiday, so, and your services have been tremendous to the town, so we really appreciate your good work.
Thank you very much. Thank all of you for your kindness in selecting me in the beginning and to continue that services. It's my honor to work for the citizens and you and all of you, and to try to do my best for, for the town.
Thank you. All right, we are to the consent agenda. These matters are considered to be routine by the board and will be enacted by one motion with no separate discussion unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the matter will be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the following item. A, approval of minutes for the October 26 closed session. B, consideration of appointments to serve as ex officio members of the Recreation Advisory Board and Community Appearance Commission. And C, consideration of an appointment to serve as the mayor's designee on the Recreation Advisory Board. So anyone in the audience who would like to see any of these items removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion? Seeing none, is there any board member who'd like to see any of these items removed for separate discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a.
You got a question, John?
Okay, I've got a motion by Alderman Barra, second by Alderman Gorm. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. All right, we are to the town manager's report.
Madam Mayor, I have two items. The first item has been a request by citizen to, for the board to consider helping them with the drainage problem, not a drainage problem, a flooding problem, basically. It's flooding slash drainage. Over on Lamshire, Mayor Pro Tem Apple, Mayor Morgan, myself, Wendy Hardup, we went out this past Friday and looked at it. This gentleman has, has been to the board three times. He came in 2000, 2003, 2004, and I can, I should have brought my glasses, but I can about see it's this house right here. His problem is, and I'll read you some excerpts from the previous minutes, his problem is his backyard is about right here. The red line that, that you see there, I got with our engineer, Chris Jensen, can you make it a little bit bigger? I might be able to see it then. There we go. The, the problem he has is he built his house in the natural drainage area. He hauled in 67 triaxle load, truckloads of dirt to raise his front yard and to raise the area where he built his house. So the water flows, it comes, this is Cabot Place off of Hopkins Road, this is on Lamshire. So the water comes out of the drain here, it sheet flows down through here, comes, enters his backyard, and before his house was there, it came right down through here and went on to the pipe and went down. So he hauled in all the truckloads of dirt. He raised his front yard up, he built the house, and he put in a 15-inch pipe, which is not big enough to carry the water. Not only is it not big enough to carry the water, as you can imagine, when you haul in 67 loads of dirt, you raise your front yard up, he's now damming the water up, basically is what he's doing, is he dams it up right here, it spills over into his backyard, and then it comes and floods up into his neighbor's driveway and into his neighbor's garage. Now, his neighbor's not, well, his neighbor is asking for the town to do something. But we went out and we looked at it, and I'll read you what our previous town engineer found back in 2004 and what he told the board and what he told Mr. Tubby. Mr. Radford was our town engineer at the time. He pointed out that the location of the house, he pointed out the location of the house, and if the topography were on this map, it would indicate that the drainage area ran right through where his house is located now. Mr. Radford stated that it was mentioned before he filled it up, he filled in the property to build his house, what the water would do, and this is exactly what has happened. But with all that aside, Mr. Tubby feels like it is the town's responsibility to do something because the town allowed Cabot Place to be built, you know, right behind his house. The other catch is, is the timing on it. He built his house in about 97, 98, Cabot Place built in about 99, so he really didn't get to see the ramifications of him filling in his yard without Cabot Place being there. So it was going to happen, it will happen, because that's a natural drainage of the area. He said he had a three-foot wide stream running through his backyard before Cabot Place was built, but again, it happened within about a year of each other, so there was probably not a storm, enough storm to show what it would do. He brought some pictures in 2004 that showed water, of course, out in his neighbor's driveway, this and that, and he said that was from a five-inch storm. When rain measured five inches in the storm gauge, it's going to do that when it measures five inches. We've told him every time he's been to the board, number one, it's on private property. We don't go on private property. Number two, this is pretty much a problem of your own making. You built a house, it was the last lot in the neighborhood in this area, probably a good reason it was the last lot. You bring in 67 loads of dirt, yeah, you got your yard raised up, you got it level, but you might have created another problem. He didn't consult, from what he said in the previous minutes, he didn't consult anyone really before putting in the pipe about what he should do for the drainage, which means he didn't take into consideration what would happen with Cabot Place when it developed. You have to take kind of that into consideration. If you buy a house at the bottom of a hill, you might want to look and see what's flowing across it. Staff recommendation still stands today. We don't recommend that they be doing anything. I talked to Mr. Powell, he's recommending that we don't do anything either. Again, it is on private property. There are some issues in town where we might could say, yeah, the town might could, could address some of that, but in this particular case, that wouldn't, it would be low on the priority list because of what the homeowner himself did when he was told what was going to happen, and it kind of came to pass. Told Mayor Pro Tem and the mayor that I would bring it up tonight, see if the board had any inclination in going out, trying to resolve this problem. It can be probably resolved. I don't know what it would take to do it, but again, that's because we've never felt like it was the town's responsibility to do it. But I did tell Mr. Tubby, the homeowner, that, told the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, I'd bring it to the board and let him know what the board's decision was. If he was not here tonight, I would let him know. Be glad to answer any questions. We've got another map, I think, can you scroll up? This map, i- it's kind of convoluted, it's got a lot of lines on it, but the yellow lines right here, as you can see, it's just a natural draw right down through there with the topo. It drops about 10 feet, 12 feet from over here to his yard, then it goes up again, drops almost 20 some feet from up to High Point Cabot Place, back down to his. So, you know, he does get some water, like a lot of other folks in town that live at the bottom of the hill, me included. You get some water running your way when it rains hard, and he's not, I guess he thought when he put the pipe in, he was doing something to, to help the issue. He helped it some, but all the dirty all in probably hurt it more than it helped it. I think his other concern was, you know, we've got the stormwater fee, what does the stormwater fee go to? And like I've said in the past, our stormwater fee, it's on every homeowner in Carnersville, it's right at $39 or $40. It's used to address water quality, not water quantity. We will address downstream flooding. It's in a creek downstream, we do that because of the water quality, not necessarily the quantity. He's not downstream, he's just downhill, so. So all I've got on this, be glad to answer any questions. Wendy's here, she can answer any as well, if you might have some.
One of the, well, two things that I didn't hear, and you covered it very well, by the way, Curtis, there was a lot of information over a long time period between what Wendy provided and what the homeowners were saying and the prior minutes of the meeting. So it was a lot of information, and you did a really good job condensing everything down. The neighbor also mentioned that the water was kind of pooling in his backyard. He had a trampoline back there, but it said it was just recently there because one of his family members was moving and needed to put it there for a little while, time, but that he couldn't have had that for his kids growing up because the backyard tended to pool water. So it didn't just go up into his garage air and driveway, it also pooled in his backyard, so I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and it, it will, I mean, as it hits that embankment there, Mr. Tubby's, it will, it will push back. And one thing I didn't say is, is I thought about it, Mr. Tubby gave Mr. Apple a map. This total acres that he has draining there, it's not a lot. It sounds like a lot, but he's got about 16 acres that drain. He's got Cabot Park right here, and then some of the church drains over there, and he's got some of Hopkins Road, but it's about 16 acres, which is not a tremendous amount draining there. You know, it's not a little amount, but it's not a tremendous amount either. Cabot Place has got pretty large lots, so there's not, you know, they don't have, it's not all covered either, either driveway or road. I mean, they've got some good sized lots there with some grass to help, to help with the runoff of, of the water there. So a lot of it gets caught before it gets into swell and goes down to Mr. Tubby's. But yes, the, the neigh- the neighbor's getting some in his backyard too, and a lot of it, and it's just backing up. It'll back up there, and then it'll eventually work its way out to the, to the driveway, so.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Curtis, did you, would you elaborate?
Make sure you speak to your mic.
I'm sorry. Would you please elaborate on you or Wendy, what, whether the, what would have been, what would have been the requirements for any stormwater management married, measures by the construction in Cabot Creek? The density, I understand, has, plays a role in that, and what they may or may not be required to do. Have you found any instance where there's been any development there that did not comply with the current laws as to stormwater?
There's not been any developments that, there that were built under the current stormwater regulations that don't comply. I think Cabot, and I don't know if it's Cabot Place or Cabot Park, but I think it's Cabot Place. I think, and Wendy can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was built before the current stormwater regulations. Had it been built under the current stormwater regulations, they would not need any stormwater ponds or anything, would they, because they're low density? I mean, those, those lots out there, some were a little bit over a quarter of an acre, and some of them more than a half acre. There's about, Ed and I rode out there today, there's about 23 homes in that area. Now, the church was built, I think the church was built under the current stormwater regulations, and it, I mean, it under the current stormwater regulations and it, I mean, it complies with all of those. So every, everything, if there were regulations in place, everything in that area complies with, with the regulations. And again, some of it, Mr. Tubby's neighborhood was built well before any stormwater regulations were in place.
I guess my point that I'm making is that it, there's not a situation that we've been able to identify where the town approved development that we shouldn't have approved that resulted in Mr. Tubby's flooding problem.
No. Is that? Yeah, there's none that we're aware of.
Thank you.
And even going back through the minutes from two thousand, two thousand three, two thousand and four. I mean, everything was, was done appropriately and was all regulations that, if any, were followed at the time.
So we have a causation issue, were we to be inclined to do anything?
No, the biggest cause of his problem is built a house in the natural drainage way.
Okay.
And water is going to continue to run where it's naturally going, unless he does something to change that and to move it, which he kind of did. He just didn't move it in a beneficial way, really.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Apple? Okay, thank you.
I do not.
So if the board chooses to do something, if, if y'all would like to do something, like the town to look into it any further, I would need a motion to that extent tonight. Otherwise, no motion, we will not proceed any further with it. All right, I will take that as a, leave it as is. Second item I have, um, we have two pending grants from DOT for two sidewalk projects. One of those being the West Mountain Street Sidewalk from, I guess, the park to the YMCA. And the other one being the, is it the, which one is it, Catherine? Cherry Street or South Main? Cherry Street from Oakhurst down to, to Lowe's Foods, somewhere right in there. We have not brought those to you all yet because we're still trying to work out some, some details about those grants. Um, our match on those grants is twenty percent. The total construction cost is about seven and a half million dollars. So our match is one point four to one point five million. The catch is, number one, we pay for the whole project and then get reimbursed. We're trying to figure out, do we have to obligate all of the seven million dollars upfront? Or can we do that in phases? Part of it this year, part of it next year. So that's, we're working on that. If we have to obligate all seven million dollars upfront, that might be difficult until next budget year because of the amount that, we've got a fund balance appropriated right now of about nine million. We're not going to spend that, but we've got to wash everything out with ARPA money and all of that. So with the fund balance appropriated, then we guarantee another seven million. We're going to be in a little bit of a, of a bind because that's sixteen million. The other catch that we're less than happy about with the wording in the grant is that while we're responsible for twenty percent, we're also responsible for any amount it goes over that cost estimate. That got us in trouble on South Main Street and it cost us about eight hundred thousand dollars more, maybe a million. The other thing is, we're trying to figure out is have they put it out to bid yet? Or will it be in, because they do it in phases? If they put it out to bid and they got a guarantee of four million dollars now and they don't, and that bid's not good, or an estimate of four million, but yet they've not put it out to bid. In three years, it might be seven million or might be two million or, who knows? But if it goes up, we're not responsible for twenty percent of that overage. We're responsible for all of it. So if, if West Mountain Street goes up and West Mountain Street, there's a lot of right-of-way acquisition, a lot of engineering. If it goes up to eight million dollars, my understanding is we're on the hook for twenty percent plus four million. So it's one we've not brought it to you yet. That's the good. The bad is, we've not heard back from DOT yet, but we have to let them know by the end of this month. So unless we can get an extension on it, we're going to have to bring it to y'all. We have to call a special meeting and either approve it or not approve it. Trying to get an extension, but we've not heard back from DOT. Um, I'll let you know just soon as I find out, but that's where we are with it. Um, we've not gotten some of our questions answered. We're not comfortable with a lot of the contract because we've been through this with them before and it didn't turn out real good. I know Joe was on the board, Chris and the mayor were all on the board when we did the South Main project. And it was, you know, we had to go back and we had to get some more grant money from another pot. And I mean, it was, it was a mess and not a lot of fun. Um, so we would rather not go through that again. But just as soon as we find out if they, we think they'll give us an extension on it. If they don't, I'll get with the mayor and get with you all and see when we can have a meeting, uh, before the end of the month to decide. That would be the only thing on the agenda. It would just be, hey, let's get in and either approve it or not approve it and roll on. So we're working on that. Um, just haven't heard back from DOT, so I'll let you know. And that's all I have. Any questions on that?
When in the month do you think you would want to do that? The very last week of the month? Like, how much time do you need to get it? The thirty-first looks like it's a Saturday. So when they say the end of the month, would you have to know the?
I would rather do it earlier than later because you get into the holiday season. So I would, you know, if they let us know this week that, hey, we can't get an extension on it, then I would just, I would rather do it like maybe next week or something and say, hey, let's, let's just get together and do it.
Because if you have an idea of when, then everyone could let Keith know their availability and then we would know dates that might be available.
Yeah, I don't have any idea right now.
Okay.
I just haven't heard back from DOT. But as soon as I hear from them and they let us know, yes, you can have an extension or no, you can't, then I'll know.
Okay.
It might be tomorrow and it might be next Tuesday or Wednesday before we hear back. So that's where we are on it. I mean, there's just a lot in it that, that we're, from a financial perspective, that we're less than comfortable with.
South Main Street was tremendously more expensive than when it had first been presented.
Had, had we not gotten, and I can't remember exactly what it was, but we went back and got quite a bit more money in grant funding. You know, they, they kicked in some safety money and some other things. I think had we not gotten that money, and Dorn might remember, but it would have been about two million dollars more. Does that sound right, Dorn? Yeah, about two million dollars more than what they told us. You know, I learned then that DOT's construction estimates, the way they do it sometimes is not how we would prefer to do it. So, you know, that part really has its concern.
Have you, have you looked at what they've sent as to like whether cost of moving utilities are included as well? That was another, um, item on Piney Grove that ended up being more expensive than we anticipated.
They are supposed to be in it, but we're also trying to figure that part out. The, the utilities and the right-of-way is supposed to be the total cost of the project. But sometimes what one party would think is total cost, another party may, may not. So that's kind of what we're looking at. So hope to have all those questions answered, especially if they don't extend it. We'll have to get them answered in pretty short order so we can come back. Make a recommendation, yes or no? And we're also trying to figure out, because those are the two most expensive sidewalk projects we have. We're also trying to figure out, hey, if we can't do these two, can we do two more in lieu of these two? That would be as beneficial. So, you know, the, the, the one that everybody's wanted and everybody's pushed for is Mountain Street, obviously because of, of the use of it. South, you know, it, that's the one. And so that's, that's one we'd like to do. Um, but again, that is the one that's the most expensive. Um, so we're looking at some different options. If, if those two follow through, can we do something that helps?
When we meet about this, can you bring maps that show exactly where the sidewalk would go?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we would have all that with you.
Okay. All right, any questions or any other information you would want from Mr. Swisher? Joe, any other additional information you would want from Mr. Swisher? If we do have this meeting in December? Okay. All right, and it would be, um, this wouldn't be an emergency meeting, it would be a special meeting. So for the public, if you're on the email notification list for upcoming meetings, you would see it. And there'd be, um, the appropriate, um, notice time given. So just like for, it's just called a special meeting because it's an additional meeting outside of our regularly scheduled ones. Correct? Okay. All right, that brings us to item six, matters to be presented by the town attorney. Mr. Powell?
Uh, don't have any report tonight, other than to thank all of you again for your kindness and courtesies. And I've tried to live up to your expectations. Uh, we do have need for a closed session tonight.
All right, now we have matters to be presented by the mayor and board of Aldermen. I'll begin with Mr. Barrow.
Just like to follow up on our last meeting when I, uh, let the board know that I wouldn't support any budgets where we spending money on Apple products because of, uh, their obvious acquiescence to the Chinese Communist nation and things they had done there. Uh, I've also asked the town IT people to provide me with a different, uh, computer to do my business on instead of a iPad. And I would urge my brothers at the bar here to do the same. That's all I have.
Mr. Apple?
I don't think I have anything. I, I just want to add a comment to Mr. Powell, just as we did with Mr. Swisher when we renewed his contract. Uh, Ed, you bring an extraordinary wealth of experience to this board and to this town. Uh, you bring a, a more than capable commitment to your work here, even though you have other commitments. Uh, we've never been, I've never been able, unable to reach you, uh, when we need an answer to a question. And I just want to say, I think we are extremely fortunate to have someone with your connections and your experience and expertise representing the town. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Gorham?
No comments.
Mr. Pennix?
We will, um, be going to closed session, but I just wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays. I wanted to thank the chamber for a wonderful Christmas parade and, um, the Curtisville Parks and Rec for a wonderful tree lighting that was very much enjoyed. And I wanted to wish everybody a happy holiday season. And unless we see you at the special meeting about roads and sidewalks, uh, I hope everyone has a happy new year and look forward to seeing you in two thousand and twenty-three at our meetings. Um, though we do have a closed session tonight, so is there a motion to go into closed session?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot one one eight three, uh, I move that the board go into closed session to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and their public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot one one eight five to discuss the possible acquisition of real property.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I've got a motion by J.R. Gorham. I've got a second from Alderman Barrow. All those in favor signify by right, raising your right hand. It's unanimous, this meeting is now in closed session. Thank you. Welcome back from closed session. Is there any further business before the board this evening? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Got a motion by Alderman Gorham, second by Alderman Barrow. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. This meeting is now adjourned.